Welcome, everybody, to the May 13th regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning. And can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
To the Republic. Which stands.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Mary Scott. Absent Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Don Pachinella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, I'd like to sit Commissioner Vinnie Grillo for the remainder of the meeting for the absent Commissioner Mary Scott. And can we get an approval of minutes for April 22nd? Regular meeting.
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley. Any questions, comments, concerns, or corrections?
No.
Nobody? Okay. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. Town attorneys report we received in writing. Any questions from the commissioners?
No.
Seeing none? Okay. Public participation, is there anybody out there who would like to speak to the commission tonight about anything that is not on our agenda? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Okay, seeing none. I see we have a bond release tonight, PH 2904, 130 Elm Street.
We do have a, the bond release, I believe, Rick put a report in your packets that was associated with the Panera Project, which is now complete.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we allow the bond release for public hearing 2904. On an amount of $11,150. As recommended by our Rick Rochelle of our, you know, planning department. Our CEO. Yeah, our C-CEO.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. And moving on, continued public hearings. I see none on the agenda. So we'll we'll move on to new public hearings, public hearing 3001. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Don Pachinella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. And Mr. Chair, I'll read the public notice in case we just did last year, last week, or last meeting.
Great.
The Enfield Planning and zoning Commission will hold public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 PM online regarding public hearing 2301, 40 Edgewood Drive, special permit and site plan review application. Allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure to accommodate a breezeway and garage addition. Rachel Boulay and Daniel Sizair, owners applicants at 53 lot 519 R40, R33 Zone.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Dan Seesus, 40 Edgewood Drive, Enfield, Connecticut.
Welcome, Dan. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
We'd like to build a two-car garage and mudroom onto our house. And we want to build it flush with the front of the house. But since it's a non-conforming lot, we had to apply for the special permit.
Okay, Lori, I assume this was a change in the zoning laws that created this non-conforming use?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions before I open it to the public? Seeing none, is there anybody out there who would like to speak in favor against public hearing 3001 for the addition of a garage to 40 Edgewood Drive? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the first time? Going for the second time? Going for the third time? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for your public hearing 30 3001. As prepared by the planning department with the 14 conditions. And the planning department review is done on April 22nd, 2021.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, you're all set. I apologize, you had to come, we're working on the regulations right now to prevent this from happening. But things move slow in government, so good luck with your garage and I wish you the best.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Moving on moving on, public hearing 3003, 612 Hazard Avenue.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Don Pachinella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. The Enfield Planning and zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, May 13th, 2021 online regarding public hearing 3003, 612 Hazard Avenue. No application from Residential 44 to Special Development District, Nettle Manor LLC owner applicant, map 110 lot 343, R44 Zone.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Chairman, for the record, my name is Peter Alter, A-L-T-E-R, I'm an attorney practicing law in Glasson Berry at the firm of Alter and Pearson. Here to represent the applicant owner of the property along with Dana Steele, who is our project engineer, JR Russo, and also present this evening is Mr. Zalman Glick, who is the owner's representative. And Ms. Witten, that's the 917 telephone number that you referred to earlier. I believe that's Mr. Glick.
Okay, tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
The application before you tonight is made pursuant to your regulation, section 5.60. The property, which consists of 8.37 acres at 612 Hazard Avenue, was the former Blair Manor Nursing Home. Which has been, as I'm sure commissioners recognize, closed and vacant for several years now. Our proposal is pursuant to the regulation to create a special development district to allow the conversion of the nursing home to a multifamily development consisting of 43 units. In accordance with your special development district requirements, you have a list of a number of requirements A through H within your regulation. I thought that your town planning staff did an excellent job of reciting each of those items and how this particular application complies with that regulation. There is there is no question that each of those items are complied with with respect to this proposal and therefore meets the standards set out in your regulation. The multifamily use that we propose would be permitted by way of the special development district. It's an excellent repurposing and redevelopment of building that if left much longer will begin to deteriorate. Our proposal contemplates no expansion of that building. But the reuse of it through changes in architecture, et cetera. Commission sees fit to approve our application this evening, we will be back in accordance with your regulation to review the details of that development through a site plan approval process. As the commission is aware, you do have to meet certain standards to qualify for zone change, one of those is with reference to your plan of conservation and development. I did have the opportunity to review that and found a number of references in your plan of conservation and development to the need for developing opportunities for multifamily housing and the use of the special development district as a mechanism by which such housing could be created. And specifically, your plan calls out that this particular development district is one of the only methods that existed back when the plan of conservation development was created to allow multifamily development as we propose. Our density proposal is consistent with the area surrounding us. We have 8.37 acres, we propose 43 units, which would be a density just slightly over five units per acre. The uses that surround us lend themselves to this kind of development. We have the Scantic River both on the south and the east of our property, although it's zoned, R44. These are state-owned properties and will continue to be state-owned properties for the foreseeable future. On the west, Hazardville Water Company owns that property. Very unlikely that any development will occur there. And then north across Hazard Avenue, of course, is a residential subdivision. The other point that I that I think is worth making is that we did go to the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency at a meeting, at their last meeting, they approved our request to make a finding that there was no activity that required a wetlands permit for the redevelopment of the site. The only increase on the site will be within the parking so that we can comply with your parking requirement of two parking spaces per dwelling unit. So in all respects, we believe that we meet each and every requirement for approval of special design district as provided in 5.60 of your regulation. We're prepared to answer any questions. Dana Steele is here and can answer any more technical questions. Mr. Glick is also available if necessary. But we would submit that this is exactly the type of rehabilitation and adaptive reuse reuse of a vacant or deteriorated or underutilized building as is contemplated by this particular regulation. Happy to answer any questions.
Because I have a question in terms of
Go ahead, Rich.
Do we know how many developable acres are in that three-point or 8.37 acres and so that we can sort of, you know, base of, you know, because I I know that, you know, what happens is that, you know, we, looking at the multi family housing developments, normally it's based on developable and not necessarily how many acres are you know, the lot size is. And I was just wondering what the developable acres are.
I would ask Dana to make the more technical response, we did provide a proposed site plan as part and an actual A2 survey as part of our submission, which identifies the relationship to the Scantic River, identifies wetlands and the upland review area that exists. There actually are very little wetlands on the site, they follow very closely the Scantic River. For the most part, Dana, I don't know if you want to add something?
Sure, for the record, Dana Steele, engineer with JR Russo and Associates. The of the 8.37 acres, I would estimate about five or six of that is 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 developable. The portions that are not developable, obviously, the the wetlands associated with the Scannick, the Scannick River, as well as some of the steep slopes in around the perimeter of the the property. So I haven't done an actual calculation to give you an exact number. Would would say to the frontage for the parcel is only 600 feet, so if you're wondering about lot yield, if that's what you're getting at for a development like like this with the the frontage requirements, I believe it's 150 feet per per lot. So so that would be four four lots. You might be able to, you can't do rear lots except in a on an open space subdivision, which I guess is is possible. We we haven't done a detailed analysis of what could be done with a with a subdivision. The main challenge being that that the site's already developed, it's already improved with this this building and the cost of removing it is is extensive.
And again, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, what, once we go forward, that, you know, any proposal that is brought before us sort of conforms with our regulations so that, you know, depending on exactly what could be done and how that's the the development could be, you know, you can add or subtract one or two or three units, whatever might have to occur. But, you know, in the overall scheme of things, you still have to meet our regulations going forward with the, you know, regulations for those particular, you know, definition of improvements is going to be.
Sure, it's my understanding, and maybe staff could confirm this, but it's my understanding that the that the STD regulation doesn't have density limits, requirements, it's really up to the commission. The the regulation, you look at what the surrounding densities are and and you you make a determination as a commission whether you think that it's appropriate for 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 the area. And one of the things that we that we mentioned in in our in our submission was there's another apartment complex sort of across the street diagonally to the west. And it's a, it's a similar, actually a little higher density than than what we're proposing, so we think that we're in the the rights, the right ratios for the neighborhood. Obviously, there's single-family homes as well in in the area, but this is, this this area has already been developed with something much denser than than single-family, and so it's a matter with adaptive reuse, how can we work with what's already there in a logical, reasonable way? So.
Just to further Dana's statement under 5.60.3A Romanet 3, the maximum overall density of dwelling units in the proposed development shall be determined by the commission as appropriate for the general vicinity of the proposed STD. So we have what we think is a reasonable proposal based on, as Dana said, the existing building. We're dealing with a footprint that is existing.
I guess all I'm saying is that, you know, when we actually hear the application for, you know, the the proposed development, we probably should have that information so that we we know exactly what we're comparing and how we're comparing, you know, what your proposal is.
We can certainly do that.
Well, our proposal is 43 units, so that's the density that that we're proposing. What what additional information are you looking for?
Well, again, you know, I I haven't, you know, it's just a comparison of, you know, of what you you have and what is there and so 43 units and we're saying that we have like five developable acres or six developable acres, or if it's five, it's 43 divided by five, which is about eight units per acre, so. And again, you know, that sort of, that falls in line with what we're looking to achieve, but, you know, everything is sort of proportional to what that developable acre area is.
We can certainly provide you with exact information in that regard.
That, and that's all we're looking for. It would just confirm that that we are, you know, going down the right, correct path.
All set, Rich?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have a question. You're saying it falls in line with the plan of conservation and development, but the plan calls for mixed use for this property. And as I'm sure you're aware, the old school down the street, we required mixed use, we required businesses in the lower level and the apartments upstairs for that to pass so we could maintain the plan of conservation. This is not doing that.
As as we point out in our materials, one of the problems that we have with that is that this is a single-story former nursing home building. So that it would be extremely difficult to create a mixed-use environment in such a situation. The other aspect of that, of course, is that this property really stands alone, surrounded by open space on three sides. And doesn't, at least in our opinion, lend itself to creating a commercial use there? That it would much better serve as a as a residential use and provide some rental housing that can be created within the existing structure of the nursing home.
Okay, and as as far as the land around the property, Dana, aren't there escarpments and everything going down to the river?
Yes.
Which would make it undevelopable?
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, your your regulations talk about, I think, for the definition, developable acres exclude slopes in excess of 15%. So those terrace escarpment soils tend to be in those those steeper slope areas anyway, so as I was, as I, my estimation, as I said, five to six acres was taking that into account.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioners, Commissioner Alamo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe a question for staff. I like this repurposing of this building. And I know we're here tonight for the zoning issue, just the zoning. So if it's approved, can the applicant just put any type of multi-use relative to amenities and style? If we approve this tonight, are we locked ourselves into anything? Because I'm more interested in what we're going to have there as as a finished product? What type of apartments? You know, amenities, lifestyle, those sorts of things that, you know, potential residents or tenants will have, so. If I'm incorrect, please advise me, Lori.
There is a site plan application on file as well. The commission had asked that the site plan application be reviewed separately from the, or at a separate meeting from the zone change.
Right, and I have the drawings right here, and I didn't open them because they're not appropriate for tonight, from what I understand. I did not even look at these yet.
Right, so the site plan review will happen or will be scheduled once the commission makes the decision.
So we have jurisdiction and leeway to take a good look at what's going to be developed relative to the building and the apartments themselves.
Yes, under the site plan review, yeah.
And I did take a ride up there today and I, you know, I did look at the at the property and I think this would be a good thing for it if we can do it and it fits our needs, so I'm I'm for this piece and looking forward to the next piece. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Alamo. Any other commissioners? Ginny? Nothing?
Sorry, I was muted. I am confused about something. I understand in the past, we've talked about spot zoning, and this is not spot zoning, so I'm not questioning that. But 5.60.1 criteria, not item G, it says the proposed exhibits compatibility with zoning districts adjacent to the site. So that's have the, these are all the A through H are criteria for the proposal meeting all of the following criteria, and I don't know, I'm not saying it's, since it's not an overlay district, I can't justify in my mind how it it's compatible with R44 and R33, so maybe somebody can explain that to me.
If I could start and then perhaps Dana has something to add and staff may also have something to add. Although we're, you're absolutely correct that the the zones around us are R44 on three sides. Even though you have it zoned, R44, the state of Connecticut owns the areas of the Scantic River and the water company owns the third side. There is R44 development across the road. But I think the way I read item G, that it exhibits compatibility with the zoning districts. In my mind, that means that a residential use, since we have residential zone around it, would be more compatible than, for example, if we were proposing substantial commercial projects here. That, to me, would be incompatible. So that in in my reading of item G, it doesn't mean that we are to develop at the same rate or in the same manner as in our 44 zone, but rather that it would be compatible and certainly in our minds, creating a residential multifamily development here in place of a nursing home is compatible with residential zones around it. And as Dana said, there is an apartment complex that that is not adjacent, but relatively close. And so we find this proposal, at least in our minds, to be compatible with a residential use as opposed to a commercial use. Dana, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I would just add the the apartment complex is, parcel is parcel 14 on the zone change map, so that's sheet two of the plan set, which which is part of this application is the zone change map. That parcel 14 is, if you look at that map, you'll see that there's a, there's an access strip that actually is basically across the street from the the northwest corner of our property. But the entrance drive to the apartments is is further to the west, so I think that's why we mentioned it's a little bit of ways, it has more of an appearance of being a little bit of ways, but it's really almost almost across the street, though it's it's not, it's not fronting on Hazard Avenue. It's a, it's a rear lot setback behind it. But yeah, I would agree with Attorney Alter that that when you're talking about compatibility, you can't really get more compatible than residential with residential. I mean, it's 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 not a question of 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 is is this commercial use compatible with this resident, this residential use? They're both Of of is is this commercial use compatible with this resident, this residential use? They're both residential, so. Um, I I think that it's uh, um, you know, the the only, the only issue is, I guess, density. And uh, and and if you look at it from the perspective of traffic. Be if you, when you compare that, you we we submitted a traffic report with this um, as well, and and if you look at the traffic report. Um, it's gonna be essentially the same amount of traffic that there was for the 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 um. The the nursing home as it will be for the for for the apartments, uh, was an increase, uh, very small increase of uh, three. Three trips in the peak hour, so uh, not as, not really a significant change traffic-wise, uh. A commercial site might have a more significant uh, change, a mixed-use site might have a more significant change, but I think this is very. Much in keeping with what's already there. I think what we're proposing is not gonna have a, a uh, be um, significant difference. Is not gonna be um, any more commercial or any more intensive uh, than 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 what's what's been there historically.
I I kinda don't agree with you on that one, Dana. That was a nursing home before, and. You had staff coming and going, but the residents were pretty much there full-time. You wanna put, you wanna put forty-four units in, figure two people per unit, that's eighty-eight people coming and going to work every day. So there's eighty-eight cars in and eighty-eight cars back out. I I mean, that's a lot more than what that nursing home was doing.
Uh, not according to our traffic engineer, uh, which is is implementing the uh, the the standard ITE. Uh, traffic manual for these these uses, and they find that these these nursing homes do generate uh, a fair amount of traffic, so. Um, uh, we 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 looked at that and and uh, and we've submitted, I think, uh, a data to support our. Our position that it's, it's not going to have uh, um, a a significant in- increase in traffic. I certainly understand. Uh, why it might think that from the, for the reasons that you just stated, but um, I think that uh. Um, when you consider all the services that that come into the, to those types of facilities, the number of employees that that work there. The twenty-four-hour shifts uh, that that involved in 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 uh, maintaining those those facilities. It's it's, it's not as different as you might, as you might think it would be. According according to the ITE traffic manual, and I I I think, I think they have good data. This isn't one of those uses. That there isn't a lot of data to support it. They've been around a long time, nursing homes, and so I think they have pretty good, a pretty good uh. Uh, scientific uh, methodology there for determining the their their trip generation.
Okay, Lori, did you wanna say something?
Yes, thank you. Um, I was, you know, Jen uh, prepared this uh, memo for the commission. And she answers the questions, how this meets the STD requirements quite well. And then I wanted to point out that as part of the STD regulation, under five-point-six-zero-point-three. It talks about if residential uses are proposed, you know, for all or part of the STD, it it goes on. To different sections, but um. But wait, I would say, if the residential uses are proposed in a mixed-use development, the commission may approve shared parking. So it says if the residential uses are proposed in the mixed use, it doesn't say that they have to be. It it actually gives the option.
Thank you. Commissioner DeGrae.
I really like the idea of reusing a building and, cause I was over there this afternoon, looked at the property. And we're, I I know the applicant is only looking at their specific use and wanting to rezone this. But I would really personally like to see that mixed use happen there. And that's just a personal thing, but I like to think about this as, all right. We saw the nursing home be there for X number of years, it went away. This apartment complex comes, it gets result, if if we pass it and gets rezoned. Therefore, X number of years, the the zoning will affect that property. For more than just twenty years, so that, you know, I'd like to see something. I don't, I I'm, I'm okay with this, but I'm not okay with this, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, is anyone else? Commissioner Petronella? Grillo?
Um, yeah, excuse me, I done unmute myself. I. I I like the the application uh, in in the use, uh, and and I've been looking at or trying to figure out. Trying to do a mixed use on this type of property, on this facility. I'm not sure what would make any sense with it, uh, in in talking about uh, traffic and trips. I think by doing that, you you would certainly be increasing more traffic to it, uh, if if you were going to induce more uh, uh. Commercial use to it, so uh, you know, again, uh, I feel it's a good use for uh, uh. An abandoned uh, property, uh, I can't, I can't think of any of any other better use that that would uh, become of it other than another nursing home. So, and that would be, you know, a stretch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I open it up to the public? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against public hearing? Three zero zero three. If so, speak up, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the first time. Anyone? Going for the second time? It's funny, last meeting we had someone going for the third time. Anyone, just state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing none. Um, how does the commission?
Kenny, I think I think uh, David is is trying to get in, people there.
Yes, I I'm here, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Dana. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Arce, A R C E, uh, I live in one forty-four Yonola Avenue, New Britain, Connecticut. I'm pastor in Enfield, and um, I what, uh, we're um, asking for a special permit.
We're, we'll get to your, you're on the agenda, but you're down the road a ways. This is for this public hearing right here.
Okay.
Has to do with the apartments or those zone change. Yeah.
Uh, I heard that they call my name, that's why I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Uh, we'll be with you shortly, sorry about that. Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor against public hearing three zero zero three? If so, state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time? Second time? And the third time. How would the commission like to proceed? Commissioner Suzak, would you like to wait for the information that you've requested or asked about?
Yes, yeah, cause, cause it's gonna be site-specific to their application term, in terms of, you know, basically, you know, I just don't wanna. Lose sight that we do have regulations that sort of define how to develop this kind of land and and what kind of densities are allowed. As long as, you know, they conform to those regulations, then then obviously we're all set, but. You know, without having that information, it's difficult for us to make an assessment as to what they're trying to do.
Understood. Um, I agree with Commissioner Suzak, and I'm willing to wait for the paperwork that he's requesting. Commissioners, how do you feel?
So, what do we close this public hearing, or do we have to hear?
No, we don't close the public hearing. Public hearing stays open. We'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay, so the next time we meet with this applicant is still gonna be relative to the zone change?
Yes.
Lori, is that correct in terms of, I I think that this. This application is just for the zone change, the next application would be for their specific use.
Right.
Right, so why?
We would close this public hearing then.
Why would you change his own if it doesn't meet what you're talking about for the.
Well, the thing is.
Area.
Okay, the question, the question was. I'm not sure what the question was, so if you, if you wanted more information for the rezone. You just uh, you table this to the next meeting, the applicant has an opportunity to give you some more detailed information on. On densities or or whatever else you're looking for, and you had requested that you, we not uh, hear the site plan. Until the special development district is approved, so you would just table this hearing and we wouldn't um, wouldn't put the site plan on until. We, this was decided on. Does that make sense?
Yes, I I agree.
Okay, Chairman, could I be heard for a moment? I'll be on the applicant, um. The the way the your ordinance is is written, it implies that there's a two-step process, the zone change and the site plan. Uh, one follows the other. Uh, it's not clear to me what um, the commissioner i- in terms of information. That can be provided in the context of a zone change. I- it would be provided in the context of a site plan. Uh, application so that you would see, for example, uh, the unit layout, you would see the density. You would see the architectural improvements, the changes to the parking lot, the changes to storm drainage. The uh, landscaping, all of those things are part of the site plan approval. I I'm not resisting providing that information. We would have been happy to provide it tonight if the site plan. Uh, were to follow the 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 zone change consideration. So I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna leave this public hearing open. That uh, you provide us with some real specific guidance as to what information. You would need with respect to the zone change. I understand. Um, all of the information, uh, we would provide i- in accordance with the site plan requirements. Uh, of section nine of your regulation, a- and we've submitted plans in that regard. Uh, I I just, I I think I wanna be very careful as to the information. That would be presented with respect to a zone change.
Yeah, and I I tend to agree with that in terms of, I think that, you know, basically our regulations define what you could do in that zone change. And then they need to conform to that zone change. We're not going to change our regulations to meet door their, you know, I guess. If the change, they have to conform their application to what we define as, you know, multifamily housing in in our regulations. And if that's what they're, you you're suggesting we're gonna redefine, you know, this space to be. Then they would meet that, those regulations associated with multifamily housing.
Well, I, with all due respect, the 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 regulation five-point-sixty-point-one. Spells out the exact criteria by which you would judge the zone change, A through H. Um, the rest of what you would judge is part of your site plan deliberation. For example, let's say that you don't like the color of the building. Um, that would be a matter under site plan uh, deliberations, but the a- at least. My understanding of the way a a zone change application would work. In a special development district zone, as you describe in section five-point-sixty, would be for you to. Apply the criteria that you spell out in your regulation. Now, if you think something here has not been fully vetted with you. And you want more information as relates to A through H, we're happy to do that. We will provide that. And the way to do that would be to leave the public hearing open and and tell us exactly what it is that you need to know. And Dana and I will make every effort to provide it. If it goes beyond that into site planning. Then it it should be part of the site plan application deliberations that would follow if you adopt the district. And and you still have to approve the site plan, so that if you don't like ultimately the site plan and we don't get that approved. The un- until we can bring a site plan to you that you will approve, the second part of the two-step process has not been satisfied. So you're not risking anything i- in regards to your oversight of what goes into this project.
His question was about developable land and what percentage of it is developable. And we don't have that, and you don't have that. You're making assumptions. You're surrounded by the Scenic River Park. There's escarpments, there's waterways, there's all kinds of stuff out there, and that weighs heavy. On the density of the zone you're asking us to change it to. So it's not relevant to the building that's there, but once we approve this, the building's already existing. So how do you say, well, you can't have that higher density? Well, the building's already there. So the only way to do anything.
You could determine under the site plan, you could determine under the site plan approval, that you're only comfortable with thirty-eight units. And a- and you say forty-three is too many because of the density, because turns out that Dana was wrong. We only have three acres to develop, and we have a density over eleven. Um, but a- a- and I and I mean, no disrespect, but uh, what I'm trying to get to. Is that w- when I look at the criteria A through H, what you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman. But doesn't fall within tho- those parameters. We're ha- and I'm not resisting providing the information. I think you're gonna be very satisfied with it. Um, I I, and if you wanna leave the public hearing open so that we can provide that. We will, but I'm not sure what it.
Yeah.
What, which of A through H it advances, I guess, is my question.
Are you changing the zone on any other property but your own?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's spot zoning, so we're specific to this one area. You can shake your head, no.
It's not spot zoning.
How do you wanna proceed?
I I I wanna do what the commission wants, and I'm happy to provide the information that you want, a- as long as you can. Give us direction as to what that might be.
Okay. Rich, what do you wanna do? Do you feel it's part of the application, or do you feel it's part of the zone change?
You you know, I think it's it's part of the application. I I agree with them in terms of if, once they did determine how many developable acres there are. That's gonna dictate how many units they can have, and then all of a sudden, if if they're proposing forty-three units. And they can only use, do thirty-seven, they have to go back and change their unit layout to agree with the developable acres. And the density allowed, so you know, we're not locked into forty-three acres by approving the zone change. They're locked into what our regulations allow them to do with a specific use that they're gonna propose for that zone change. I, that's the way I I look at it, and which is, I think, exactly what Mr. Attorney Alter is saying, is is that. You know, right now, what what we're trying to do is we're trying to fit their building into this, the this use group. And in and no, they have to fit, you know, the use group in into the the zone change. I I believe that's, that's the way I read it, and and Lori, could you correct me if I'm wrong, or?
I I kind of agree, but what I would suggest is, why don't we go through the criteria? A through H and decide whether or not it meets the criteria for the zone change. If it does, then we, you move forward. If it doesn't, then maybe there's some some. Questions that could be asked and answered.
Okay.
I, you know, Mr. Chairman, this this, you know, it's just a suggestion, just to kind of move things along, but I mean. The regulations are very clear that it must meet the certain criteria. And Jen has um, been, Jen responded quite well in her report on these.
Okay. Commissioner Alamo, your hands up?
Yes, um, so at our last meeting, when we were, I believe in the section on the agenda for applications to come. We uh, discussed this, and we asked, and we were all in agreement, we asked staff to please not bring. Both parts tonight. We asked them to specifically bring this zone change and then move forward to.
this zone change and then move forward to the site plan. And we were all in consensus of that because we didn't want to get into what we're getting into right now. And, you know, you have to go back and think about what we instructed staff to do. You can look at the video or the minutes. We specifically asked for this process to be like this so we don't get into the weeds on what we're getting into now. So I think we should vote or, and up or down and move on or close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I would refer to you, but that's my feeling on this.
Commissioner Petronella.
Yeah, I have a question for, uh, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for staff with respect to the density. Uh, i- i- is that based upon the overall acreage of the parcel or just the developable acreage? I'm a little bit confused on that. I would assume that it would be the to- total acreage of, of the parcel.
I believe in other sections of the regulations, it varies. There, I know that when you're talking about like open space subdivisions, you want to make sure that you're basing density off of the developable acres or something. Or, or if it's the first, it's something about the percentage of open space based on, instead of the entire property, um, it's the developable acres. Um, in this instance though, in these reg- in the regulations for special development district, the density really is determined on, uh, what the commission thinks is appropriate. Um, so I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, uh, seemed like, um, Commissioner Suz- Suzak might have been drawing off of a different section of the regulations where similar, similar use might be proposed. Like maybe multifamily housing.
Mm-hmm, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I, could I add something, uh, to the discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I've, I've gone into the, uh, the, the, our, our drawing, our survey and, and calculated the, uh, developable area. It's approximately five acres. So if that helps with, I, but, but I, I would agree. I think the, the regulation we're looking at does not what, um, the developable area is not one of the factors in, in, uh, in determining how this will be developed. It's not, it's not limited in that, in that way. It's just, it's a different, uh, scenario. But that being said, if it's information that you feel is important in your decision, uh, we want to provide it. Uh, that's why, that's why I checked it. So if it's, if it's, uh, um, you, the regulations specifically say that we need to provide you with the number of dwelling units per lot rather than based on developable area, the, the number per lot. So if you look on the zone change map, we provided that. Every parcel that's within, uh, the, the neighborhood, we indicate the number of units per lot. So the apartment complex that's across the street is forty units. Um, all the residential, single family, they're one unit and our development is forty-three units. So, um, so we think that, that, you know, based on your regulations, we provided it that way. If, if we thought that, that it was based on developable area, um, then we would have provided that. But that's not the way we interpreted it. Um, but, but I have, I have checked it, um, you know, with, uh, uh, a reasonable accuracy, it's, it's, it's going to be about, about five acres, uh, uh, give or take, you know, a couple of tenths of an acre maybe. Um, so, so I, I, I think that should give you enough information to kind of un- understand what, what, what density uh, we're, we're, we're talking about. So forty-three divided by five is eight point six.
Thank you, Dana.
Sure.
Commissioners, any other questions before I open it up to the public again? Seeing none. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor against public hearing three zero zero three? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the first time. Going for the second time. Public hearing three zero zero three to convert six twelve Hazard Avenue into a apartment complex. Seeing none. How does the commission want to proceed?
Move we close the public hearing?
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded all in favor of closing the public hearing. State aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Now you can't take any more information.
I understand that. That's what they want. Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve public hearing thirty oh three six twelve Hazard Avenue Zone Change Application from Residential R forty-four to Special Development District Metal Manor LLC Owner Applicant Map One Ten, Lot Three Forty-three, R forty-four Zone.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
I'm against because I don't believe it meets the plan of conservation and development.
Linda DeGray.
I'm against. I also don't believe it meets the plan of conservation.
Virginia Higley.
Ginny, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm against, not only because of the plan of conservation and development. Staff gave us, uh, information on all the, uh, uh, letters under five point sixty point one, but I still had issues with EF and G.
Frank Alamo.
I'm for. I think it would be a good use for that building and repurposing it. Um, anything, uh, better than what I went up there and looked at today?
John Petronella.
Uh, I'm for and I echo, uh, Commissioner Alamo's comments.
Vinnie Grillo.
I'm for. I also agree, uh, Commissioner Limo, Commissioner Petronelli. Um, I think we could deal with the other parts next meeting. Um, so I'm for.
And Richard Suzak, I am also for because I think that what we need to do is sort of develop parcels that can be developed in, in a r- r- realm where we still have control over what's going on. And, you know, with the, you know, information provided, we could re- do a thorough review of what their application should, could be and make sure it conforms with our regulations.
Okay, that's four in favor, three against. I believe that does not pass, does it, Lori?
Does.
Yeah, I, I, it does pass.
Okay. All right, congratulations.
Very much.
What's that, Lori?
I agree it does pass.
Okay, moving on. Um, public hearing three zero zero four nine North Main Street. Um, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Don Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here. The Enfield.
Linda DeGray is here too.
Linda DeGray. You disappeared from my. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearing at their next me- regular meeting on Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seventeen regarding public hearing thirty oh four nine North Main Street. Special permanent site plan review application to allow a place of worship, a church in one of the units of the building at nine North Main Street. Dial and Pride Ten Hotel Owners, Dixon Baker, applicant map twenty-four, lot fifty-nine.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record. Now is your chance, Dave.
David Arce. Uh, I live in one point four Wydolla Avenue, New York, Connecticut, zero six, six five, zero six zero five one. Uh, sorry for the confusion before. I'm not used to the public hearings.
That's quite okay.
Okay.
Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Uh, we're asking for this, uh, special, uh, permit because we want to establish this, um, uh, worship center, uh, a place, uh, to support individual and group to perform acts of devotion, uh, veneration and religious studies. A place where children, uh, young people and adults can come together and worship together. Um, we want to educate family values to all ages and promote love for each other. Also, I want you to know that our goal is to make a positive impact, not only in the community of Enfield, but also the neighboring, um, towns and also states, if it is possible. Uh, I just want to add that, um, this place was used before, um, as a place of worship. It was called the Abiding Place, uh, for more than five, five years. And it, it has been, um, uh, vacant for a few years now. But it was used as a, um, place of worship before. Um, I just want to be clear, completely clear that our plan is not to build or make any structural changes to this place. We just want to occupy the place as it is. Close to this place, uh, there's only a small pest control company and, um, health center that usually there during the weekends and nights are closed. So, um, I think that our presence there is going to make people really, uh, comfortable to use these areas. That's all I have to say right now.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions?
I do have one for the staff. And Lori, I'm hoping you can clarify this. I'm looking on our advertisement, uh, list and you've got public hearing thirty-three oh four. And it is public hearing thirty oh four is, did the public notice go out as thirty-three oh four?
In the paper. It wasn't, it was a, uh, just an error, but we did fix it when we posted it. So I think that's just the old version.
And here. I, I just want to make sure that it's okay because we've run into this in the past where it was misrepresented in the paper. That's all I'm asking. Okay, I'm fine. I, I, you know, I don't want to run into that issue again. Thank you.
Yeah, because it was on the website, we were able to fix it quickly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Seeing none. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing three zero zero four nine North Main Street for a special permit and site plan review application to allow a place of worship. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak in favor or against this application? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the first time.
Mind, hello? Can you hear me? Hi, how are you, Chairman? Uh, my name is Pritham Patel. I am the owner of the Sachi Corporation and also the nine North Main Street. I live in sixty Singletary, in Birmingham. Um, I definitely welcome David and Elsa to start a worship place over there and by the approval of the commissioner and everybody else. So we request them that please pass the special permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lori, do you have to be a resident to speak at a public hearing?
You're supposed to be, but if there's, they, unless they have a specific interest in the property or something.
Okay, that's why I let him speak because he owns the building. So I don't think you're going to have any more of an interest.
Yeah.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor against public hearing three zero zero four nine North Main Street? Speak up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Dial Patel.
Go ahead.
I'm the, I'm also the, uh, part owner of the, uh, property, nine North Main Street. And, uh, the property has so much vacancy. This new tenants will be doing a good work for the society and improve the social environment around the place. Will help the, uh, Connecticut, uh, state as well as the town of Enfield.
Okay, thank you. Going for the second time. Anybody would like to speak in favor or against? And going for the third time, public hearing three zero zero four nine North Main Street. Okay, seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing thirty oh four.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Higley. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. And how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution for public hearing thirty oh four dated May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as prepared by the planning department with the thirteen conditions indicated with zero site specific conditions.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion vain, seconded by Commissioner DeGray. All in, or roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
For.
Linda DeGray.
For.
Virginia Higley.
For.
Frank Alamo.
For.
Don Petronella.
For.
Vinnie Grillo.
For.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations. Welcome to Enfield and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing three zero zero six ninety Elm Street.
Will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on May thirteenth, Thursday at seven P M. Regarding public hearing thirty oh six ninety Elm Street. Special permanent site plan review application to allow the construction of a twenty-three hundred square foot Popeyes Restaurant with a drive-through and associated parking lot. Enfield Square Realty LLC, Enfield CHLL and Enfield LLC owners. Enfield Development LLC. Attention, Mr. Ed Bakish, applicant. RJ O'Connell, Association. Attention, Mr. Steve Gallop, applicant, representative, lot forty-three. Map, map forty-three, lot seventeen B R Zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Mike Alamo.
Here.
Don Petronella.
Yeah.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. For the record, I'm Steve Glawacki with RJ O'Connell Associates. We are the civil engineers on the project. We're located at eighty Montvale Avenue, Stoneham, Massachusetts. Joining me tonight for questions, should they arise, is Ed Basch, also from PN Restaurants. And, uh, will be available for questions at the end of our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Did you bring a virtual bucket of chicken for us?
Yes. It almost tasted.
I wish I had smell-a-vision on this computer. All right, well, welcome. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
Sure. Uh, the proposal is for a twenty-three hundred square foot Popeyes Restaurant with a drive-through and associated parking to be located at the Enfield Square at ninety Elm Street. It is allowed by special permit in the business, uh, regional zones. The site itself is approximately, uh, point eight three three acres. It's part of a parcel that was subdivided in two thousand and nineteen for the overall lot configuration of the Enfield Square. And it is located at the northwest corner of the Enfield Square Mall. It's bounded by the outback to the east, Friendly's and the access drive to the west, the mall itself to the south, and it fronts on Elm Street to the north. The site parking lot, uh, contains twenty-three spaces. Now, per code for twenty-three hundred square foot drive-through, we require thirty-one spaces. However, it should be noted. However, it should be noted that there are three thousand three hundred and fifty-five existing spaces. And when you add the twenty-three spaces, we have a total of three thousand three hundred and seventy-eight spaces. While there are three thousand one hundred and forty-six required spaces, leaving a surplus of two hundred and thirty-two spaces. Drive-through lane wraps around the site, I'm sorry, around the building, serving the drive-through window and reader boards. And it's sufficient for ten vehicles stacking spaces. There is pedestrian connectivity provided from the existing sidewalk to the west via the accessible loading areas between the accessible handicap spaces. There's also a refuse area proposed for the northeast corner, which is enclosed with a, with a wall and a gate in the front. There was a sight lighting program provided, which is detailed in the lighting plan, sufficiently lights the parking area with downcast LED fixtures. Which prevent the spillage of light into other areas. The development of this will result in approximately twenty-one thousand square feet of additional impervious area. To mitigate stormwater associated with that, we've provided a comprehensive plan, which is detailed on C two and also outlined in the stormwater report that was provided as part of the materials. The stormwater will be directed through catch basins with sumps, hoods, and will be directed through a particle separator and eventually into a subsurface system drainage system. And the roof water will be directly piped into that as well. So we will mitigate stormwater effectively. We've provided a plan that shows extensive erosion control measures, which include straw waddles, a vehicle tracking pad, filter bags in the catch basins, and a construction fencing gate, which will be erected for construction activities. As you can see from the plan, the parking lot's been designed in accordance with the standards as noted above. And that will also include a very comprehensive landscape design, which is also provided in the package. We will exceed the provided, the requested regulations by providing more shade trees than called for. We've received some comments from Dan Parisi, which we've addressed via your website, your online website. And we answer everything in the affirmative to sufficiently answer his questions. In summary, we think the project is, is a good fit for the area, harmonious with the area, of course, with other restaurants in the area, and it's been designed to meet all the local and state regulations. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, I'll start since I don't see any hands. Do you think you'd find a better location for the dumpster? I mean, that's right in front of the building on Elm Street and the mall is, you know, granted, the mall is kind of vacant, but the Elm Street corridor of the mall, it's pretty attractive. They make it look nice out back and everything else. And, you know, that dumpster is really gonna block the sight line of the outback when people are driving down. And I just don't see that it being in the front of the building is the best spot for it. Not that I'm gonna redesign your parking lot, but if you put it to the left where you pull in and out of the parking lot and, you know, whatever spaces you lose there, you could move to where it currently is. That moves it to the back of the building and it's out of sight. I would think that'd be more attractive for you also.
That's a very good point. The challenge with these type of buildings is because they're surrounded by all sides that we feel that there are impacts on several sides. We've taken effort to screen it sufficiently with a wall. And then also, if you look at the landscape plan, we do provide some landscaping around that in an effort to soften that look.
Yeah. Okay, any other commissioners' questions?
Commissioner Suzak. Cause, cause I guess I would, first, I'd like to just comment that I would agree with, you know, our chair that you know, normally what you want to do is you don't want to put your dumpster in your front yard. And basically, you know, Elm Street is the front yard of what's going on here. And it, it just seems inappropriate to have that dumpster pad right there in terms of, you know, I think there's a lot better locations for that. And, you know, we, you know, we don't, again, it has to be congruous with, you know, the surrounding area. And a dumpster is not, you know, congruous with, you know, what's going on there. Cause, cause the only other comment I would have is that, you know, although you make mention of the fact that there is, you know, three hundred or three thousand additional parking spaces in the mall itself. It would be difficult to believe that somebody's gonna walk very far in order to, you know, park and then come to Popeyes. And that, you know, more likely than not, they would either park in Figaro's or they would park in the outback, you know, parking lot. You know, that's just adjacent to this proposed location to, to, you know, if it was inadequate parking. So, you know, and again, you know, I don't know that, you know, if you need to put up some signs, say, you know, please, you know, respect, you know, our neighbors, you know, parking areas and don't necessarily park in their areas or not. But, you know, I think that, you know, something should be added so that, you know, people recognize that, you know, Popeyes doesn't own, you know, outback or Figaro's parking lots.
If I may, the program for Popeyes typically relies on twenty-one spaces. Your bylaw, of course, is looking for, I think, thirty-three, if I recall. Yes, I'm sorry, for thirty-one spaces. So the program's been designed in excess of what Popeyes typically requires. And again, we respect the bylaw and the regulations in town. However, given the volume of drive-through business that Popeyes does, they find that the twenty or so, I'll say, spaces are sufficient to accommodate their everyday needs. And as for the dumpster, if I may continue, I'll check with the client, but I don't see an issue with us exploring moving that perhaps to a different location. I don't want to give the impression that we're, you know, against the commission's recommendations.
Again, I think that would be a prudent modification or even as a condition, I would, I would accept that. But like you said, it just seems inappropriate to put it right in your front yard. And it's like having a garbage can sitting in your driveway all the time. And everybody who drives by is looking at your garbage can and saying, why can't he put that away somewhere? So in that sense, I think it would be appropriate not to have it in our front yard.
Can I ask what exactly the height of that screening is and what the material exactly is? I see some shrubbery. What's the wall constructed of and the height, please?
The wall is constructed of CMU, and I believe it's an eight-foot-high wall, if I'm not mistaken.
And then in front of the wall, what's the shrubbery gonna be?
I'm not sure the, I can't recall the exact species, but it's not very tall, but species, it's probably thirty inches. So it does screen the wall somewhat, but the wall itself acts as the screening for the, for the trash enclosure.
Thank you. One more thing. So Chairman Nelson mentioned the line of sight for outback. Is that blocking outback sign or anything like that?
No, we don't believe it'll block their sign from that area. One of the things that we're doing over here is, is reducing some of, we're opening up essentially the visual corridor in the front by virtue of moving some of those or removing some of those shade trees and replacing them in another location. So I think we're opening up this line of sight and I don't believe that that will block any of their line of sight.
Okay, and any quick thoughts of any other locations on this parcel where you could possibly move that dumpster? Because it's, you're gonna see it from no matter where you are because of the way the lot is, it's just wide open there. So if you're sitting in Figaro's, you're gonna see it. If you're sitting in Friendly's, you're gonna see it. If you're sitting in Outback, you're gonna see it. So, I mean, yeah, it's in the front now, but it's not like nobody's gonna see it because just the configuration.
Well, that's, that's what I sort of implied with my initial response. It's a challenging site in a good way because there's visibility from all sides. But the challenge, of course, is that you have many front doors, I'll say, you know, even though the building faces the street. So there are locations where it's gonna show in some location. That's why we think the screening is sufficient, given the material for the, for the enclosure.
Thank you for your answers.
My pleasure.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the commissioners, please raise your hands so we're not stepping on each other.
Ken, the hand raising icon is gone when the map goes up. I don't see my hand raising.
I'm looking at them right now. I have three other commissioners in front of you.
Right, I just don't see it anymore. It's gone.
Okay, well.
Sorry.
Commissioner Grillo.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Sir, I have a question. If you went where that dumpster is on the exit, the opposite end of the West Entrance Road. Where the transformer pad is, if you go down, you have two parking spots, one says at twenty-seven feet and one at nine. Bottom right-hand corner, if you're looking at the screen. You've already got a whole bunch of shrubs. It looks to be right there. If you make that wall, and this is just a suggestion, but I think it would work, first of all, you'll be in the back corner. It's close to the building, but if you made that a three-sided wall and you did that shrubs on that corner right there on that whole outside corner, that would hide it, I think, pretty well. Because on the west entrance side, if you had the shrubberies like you show there, that will get big enough. But I truly believe that that spot, looking at, looking at the map and looking at the buildings on both sides, that rightfully is the right, that's where that dumpster should go. And if you have the walls there with the shrubberies around it, it's gonna disappear in that back corner. You should be far enough away. I'm thinking, I'm looking, I didn't take out my, my ruler, but you should be far enough away from the entrances where the fire marshal or anybody else shouldn't have any problems. Just a suggestion, but I'm also not liking that dumpster in that front corner.
Thank you for your suggestion, Mr. Grillo. It does seem like an appropriate location. It does offer, it's the layout of the lot does seem to suggest it could fit there reasonably when, with the relocation of some of the screening and then an offset of the parking, if you will. We'll certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner DeGray.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. You're saying that the wall is supposed to be eight feet. Don't, normally, we only allow a six-foot-high fence. I know you're trying to screen a dumpster, but if it was moved, I don't. I'm kind of on the same line with Commissioner Grillo on that. Moving it over to this right here, right in the corner.
Yeah, you're suggesting that the lower left-hand corner in view, which I believe is the north, I'm sorry, the southwest corner.
I thought he was talking about the southeast corner.
I was talking about the right corner away from West Entrance.
Oh, right.
The west, you would want it right almost straight across from where it is now.
Right.
The little.
Yeah, that little curve, yeah.
Because you can, you can cover and hide everything. You look like you already have shrubs there. Is that you moving the, the little?
It's not me. It's not me.
I feel like I'm moving it or something, but I'm not. That's the corner I'm talking about. Sir, I'm sorry, Steve.
No, thank you for the clarification.
All right, so right there.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, that's where I originally said. And I mean, I don't care if they put it in the left corner either because when you pull out, it's a right turn only because that's a boulevard right there. So you wouldn't have a sightline issue. But, you know, going towards Commissioner Alamo, how frustrated do you get when your neighbors leave their trash cans out all week? This is a main thoroughway through Enfield and we're gonna look at dumpsters? I don't think so. And, you know, along with what Commissioner Suzak said, I would, I would have no problem making it a condition of approval. But I do not want the dumpster in the front of the building. It's not fair to the other restaurants or the entrance to the mall. We all know dumpster areas look beautiful when they're brand new. But in five years, there's grease barrels out there, there's spilled grease, there's boxes, the fences are ripped down. And I don't care what you do to a CMU wall, it's ugly. You know, so I would, I would ask that a condition of approval be that the dumpster is moved to the back parking area and it's entirely up to you where, but I just don't want it on the sightline of Elm Street. Commissioner Suzak, your hand is up. Did you want to speak again?
Yes, I just want to reinforce, you know, what the discussion is, the direction this discussion is going in terms of, I agree that, you know, what normally happens is that mainstream walls, unfortunately exposed to the weather on all sides, eventually deteriorate. There's always water infiltration and freeze-thaw cycles and everything starts falling apart. And the fact that, you know, there's, there's always, you know, wind blowing and sometimes people don't close covers to dumpsters. And all of a sudden, you get, you know, loose papers flying around and, and it's only gonna be flying in your front yard. And, you know, if it's flying in your backyard, you know, I don't really care, but it really shouldn't be flying into the street. So I, I also would support, you know, providing a condition that the dumpster be moved to the back. So I will include that. Thank you.
And I'm also allowing, and I just want to clarify, you know, if you're taking two spaces from the rear to put the dumpster in, you could put the two spaces where the dumpster pad currently is. So you're offsetting your parking and you wouldn't have to come back to us for that. So, you know, just flip-flop. So. Anyone else before I open it to the public? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up public hearing three zero zero six ninety Elm Street. Special permit and site plan to allow Popeyes to come to town. Going for the first time, second time, third time, it's closed. Moving on. Okay, first time, is there anybody, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor against going for the first time? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Going for the second time. And going for the third time. Okay, seeing none, how would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing thirty oh six.
Motion's made, is there a second? And seconded by Commissioner DeGray. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public hearing is closed. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for the approval of the resolution to approve public hearing thirty oh six dated May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as prepared by the planning department with twenty-five conditions originally indicated with site specific conditions. And we are going to add an additional site specific condition after dumpster relocated. Relocated to the rear of the building in that the, any spaces displaced by the dumpster could possibly be utilized as normally located so that the parking does not have to be modified.
Okay, motion's made. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's vain, seconded by Commissioner Grillo. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations and welcome to Enfield.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments. Have a great night.
You too. Okay. Moving on, public hearing three zero zero Moving on, public hearing three zero zero seven eleven Shaker Road.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven PM online regarding public hearing thirty oh seven eleven Shaker Road, special permit and site plan review application to allow the construction of a ten thousand square foot Michael Jeffrey and Joseph owner, Winston. Yeah, owner, Winston LLC, attention Eric.
No, Winston LLC.
Winston, I'm sorry, Winston Property LLC, I'm sorry. Applicant J.R. Russo and Associates LLC, Tim Kuhn, applicant representative, map sixty-four, lot one oh six, limited office zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tim Kuhn. I'm a professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates. Here tonight representing Winston Properties LLC, along with Eric Spongen, who is the main partner of Winston Properties. You may recall, we were in front of you last month seeking a text amendment to allow this proposed use in the limited office zone as well as the ten thousand square foot building. We thank you again for approving that text amendment, and we are here tonight seeking the second step, which is the approval of the site plan and special use permit. If I may share my screen, if I have that ability. I will, it looks like I do. Okay, so the existing site, which is this parcel here, it's located to the north of Shaker Road. Shaker Road is on the south. It's two point one nine acres roughly, but the address is eleven Shaker Road, and it's, as I mentioned before, it's zone limited office. It's abutted to the north by the Henry Bernard School, to the east by a residential home, to the west by residential homes off of Gani Terrace, and to the south across Shaker Road by the Walgreens Pharmacy, an attorney's office. This is the Way Learning Center, which is another daycare and undeveloped industrial land. The site itself is undeveloped and currently overgrown with brush. What we are proposing is a ten thousand square foot child development center. The building would be located centrally in the site. To the rear of the site, there will be a five thousand square foot playground, which will be surrounded by a fence. It will be accessed off of Shaker Road down at the southwest corner. In response to comments that we received both from engineering and the police department, we have modified this curb cut so that it is designed with an island and signage to limit it to right turn in and right turnout. Due to the traffic and speeds on Shaker Road, it was a concern and thought best to prohibit the left-hand turns, which would result in crossing of Shaker Road into the far lane. So we revised this, the curb cut, so now it's right turn in, right turn out. As you can see, we're proposing parking lots in front of the building as well as one to the rear. The zoning requirements for parking is fifty-two spaces for this size building and the number of employees and children. And we are providing fifty-three spaces, which is shown on this plan. The site will be served by municipal water, sanitary sewer, and natural gas. The sewer will actually be pumped out to our west through an easement that we will obtain from ten Gani Terrace to the existing sanitary sewer manhole in Gani Terrace. The applicant has an agreement with the property owner for this easement. The paperwork is being reviewed and finalized by his mortgage company. And obviously, we would submit a copy of this easement and it would be recorded prior to the start of construction. I will also note that Dan Perizzi of the WPCA has reviewed our sanitary sewer design and has approved. With regard to drainage, the site parking lots have been designed to sheet flow stormwater to the surrounding, essentially, there's gonna be a surrounding depression, which goes pretty much all the way around the site. We did some test pits out here. Very sandy soils, very good for infiltration, so we want to take advantage of that. So all our stormwater is simply gonna sheet flow off into this depression where it will be allowed to infiltrate back into the ground. And we did submit a drainage report with the calculations indicating that the depression is sized sufficiently so that we have, you know, no flooding issues and no increase in peak discharge from our site. We're showing a dumpster pad for the dumpsters at the rear of the parking, or the rear of the property at the end of the parking lot. This will be located on a concrete pad surrounded by silk fence with privacy slats as well as ring by our devices for screening. There will be internal sidewalks to connect the parking lots to the building. There is also, based on comments we received from the town engineer, the existing bituminous sidewalk, which currently runs across the frontage of the site, will be replaced with a new concrete sidewalk meeting the town standards. Permanent monument sign, which will meet all the sign requirements for zoning up along this, at the site entrance. Site lighting will be provided by a series of pole-mounted light fixtures. They'll be mounted at twenty feet maximum height, full cutoff fixtures, LED. We did provide a photometric plan. One of the planning department or the planning comments was to recommend investigating ways to eliminate some of the light levels right at the property line, which was right around here. There were a couple of them, which were point one, kind of right at the property line. We did provide a photometric plan with this, so that's what they were reviewing. After consultation with our lighting consultant, we can reduce those lighting levels simply by taking this light fixture here, which is the closest one, and turning one of these light fixtures ninety degrees. So we have no problem with that being a condition of approval. We address the staff comments to reduce those light levels, because we can do it very simply by just turning the light fixture. With regard to landscaping, due to being surrounded by residential zone properties to the east, north, and west, we are subject to the requirement to provide a type C landscape buffer along those property lines. And what you'll see in the dark green here is our thirty-five-foot type C buffer. We had a detail. It's essentially the buffers, a mixture of shrubs, canopy trees, and evergreen trees to provide screening to these residential neighbors. We are proposing street trees along our frontage as well as trees for parking lot landscaping. There are no wetlands on the site, however, there were some wetlands identified off to the northeast of our parcel, and as a result, we did seek an application for a permit, and that was granted as an agent approval last week, so we do have our wetlands approval. We did receive comments from engineering and addressed them all, other than, I believe there's just a few minor comments with regard to notes and some details that still need to be revised, and we're happy to address those as conditions of approval. As I mentioned before, we received Dan Perizzi's approval of the sanitary sewer. And that mentioned that the police had requested that we make the change that we have made at our curb cut. Another question that the police department brought up was whether or not there would be buses coming in and out of this site. And the answer to that question is no, there's no bus drop-off or pickup at this site, so we did not have to worry about configuring our parking lots in order to allow those buses to be able to turn around. In summary, we believe that the pro, actually, before I go to my summary, I will show you the architectural plans, because we did submit architecturals. As you can see, this is the building's, the bottom elevation is the south elevation facing the street. And the building has a stone veneer at the bottom portion of the buildings. Then it's drive it with a sand pebble finish for siding. They're gonna have a band, a little colored band to kind of break up the walls so that there's some different colors, a different color trim at the top. And along the sides, there's also, again, a stone veneer. So it's really gonna be a nice-looking building. All the rooftop mechanicals are gonna be hidden behind a parapet. You can see through here that they're showing mechanicals on the roof, but they will be hidden and not visible from the street or surrounding properties. So with that, I'd just like to summarize that we believe that the proposed facility and use will be in harmony with the neighborhood and will not create any public safety issues. And we would hope that you would approve the application this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Suzak. Are you muted, Rich?
I guess, you know, my major concern for this development is the fact that, you know, we're utilizing the periphery of the lot for drainage and storage of water in terms of, you know, I guess I have a problem with that, only because the fact that, you know, during significant periods of rainfall, that, you know, the ground gets saturated, and after the ground gets saturated, you know, the water has to run somewhere. And basically, you know, it appears that, you know, all the water is either gonna run onto your neighbor's yards because it's not gonna stay on your property because of the fact that, you know, everything is improved, or there's a significant amount of improvement in impervious surfaces that are dumping water into the periphery. And I know that unfortunately, the town has been liable for other areas that, you know, caused distress or modify the performance of, you know, a certain owner's property, and that ultimately, we have to rectify something that we approve. So I'm not that comfortable of, you know, just allowing the water to flow to the neighbor's yards. And I hear that you're saying, yeah, it's gonna infiltrate, but, you know, everybody says that. And, you know, I wonder what kind of guarantee will you give us that, you know, if a problem occurs on a neighbor's property, you would fix, you will fix it. And it won't be just a condition of approval. Somewhere, it has to state that, because, you know, people just forget that, you know, what's on drawings, and, you know, all they know is that, you know, oh, you approved it, you should have had better foresight. And now it's your problem. And I know that the town is responsible for the decisions that we make. And if we make a poor decision, the town has to correct it. So in that vein, you know, I am not comfortable with just allowing surface runoff to the periphery that that's gonna cause water, that could possibly cause water to flow onto property owner's land a disturbance to them.
Thank you, Commissioners. Go ahead.
If I could address that. The, as I mentioned, we did do test pits out here, and there are very, very sandy soils with, and we with a very fast permeability rate. We have provided drainage calculations based on the infiltration rates of the soils that are out there, which demonstrates that the water's not gonna run over onto the abutted properties. It's gonna very quickly infiltrate back into the existing soils out there. This is a very large basin area, if you will, with a lot of surface area to allow for that infiltration.
Well, let me ask a quick question. In winter, when the ground is frozen, where's the water go?
In the winter, what we have done is we have, and I will show you, we've done this at other locations. We provide for we put trenches. I gotta get to the right sheet here. Let me blow this up.
And when the trenches freeze?
Well, the trenches are stone and they go down into the ground so that they will not freeze.
Well, you know, the thing is, I've seen a lot of buildings that have gutters, and the gutters always freeze in terms of, whenever something's exposed to the weather and the potential for freezing and icing, you know, and then all of a sudden, we become responsible for that. You know, I really am uncomfortable with it, you know. And, you know, it's, you know, I've just seen so many things go wrong with this type of, you know, if it was just your own land and you weren't that close to periphery of your neighbors, I would say, fine, you have someplace to absorb some of that water, and if it floods on your own property, then that's fine. But basically, what you're doing is you're elevating, you know, the entire area for your building, and everything's just flowing outwards away from it. So.
It will be contained on our property. It's going to go on the ground. We have measures that are going to assist getting into the ground during the winter. Infiltration is the best management practice for all stormwater recommended by the DEP. That's what everything is going to. They want you to return.
Normally, you would collect it on your property, and if it floods, it would just flood your property. Pushing everything out to the periphery, and if it floods, it's gonna flood somebody else's property.
If what it's gonna do first is flood our property, it's gonna flood our basin. And then, if there's an issue, it would go off onto the neighbor's property. But we've provided, like I said, we've provided calculations reviewed and approved by the town engineer. It's infiltration is the practice that everybody is promoting these days. So that's what we're looking to do out here. You know, I don't know what kind of assurance can be put on a plan. Obviously, if there is a problem on our site that the water was to flood onto the neighbor's property, we would be civilly responsible for that. I don't believe it would be the town's responsibility. It would be the property owner's responsibility, and they would have to take measures to rectify that.
It's just amazing what the town is blamed for, and I just am very uncomfortable with it. And I guess I just might be an old dinosaur, but, you know, anytime you have a driveway or something happens, the town has to take responsibility for it. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Suzak. Along the lines with what Commissioner Suzak's saying, I was looking at the topo around the property. And the most I see is a two-foot drop in elevation from the trenches to the parking lot. What I don't see is what's on the other side of the trenches. What is the elevation of the surrounding properties? Because if the surrounding properties are lower, then before that water backs up on your property, it's gonna flood their properties, and we can't have that. I mean, you're surrounded by quite a few properties, and it's just not fair to the residents. So and I don't know if it would help Commissioner Suzak if he saw what the elevations were, you know, on the other side of the berm or trench, whatever you want to call it, on the neighbor's property. I mean, is that water gonna run downhill right towards their house if it overflows these trenches? Because it just, it's, you know, you represent that it's a large area, but it's really not that deep.
And it doesn't have to be. Again, the calculations demonstrate that there's sufficient area and storage in here so that we're not creating an issue with flooding off the property. It will flood. All of this lawn area will flood first before it goes anywhere. The elevations, probably the lowest elevations we have, and let me zoom in.
One twenty eight is what I saw.
Well, no. So there's basically all around the property, it comes down from our property line, one twenty eight five is the bottom of the depression all the way around the property. And then the there's it's essentially the berm on the other side between us and the abutting properties, the lowest spot is one twenty nine five. There's a low, this is an area where it's one twenty nine five. So if it did flood and was going to spill over, it would spill over here, which was up at the front of the parcel and then would go out to the street.
I believe it's the same on the left front corner.
Okay, this is the right rear corner again, the one twenty nine five. So it same elevation as the right front corner. Here it would go off in toward toward the wetland, toward the northwest.
Right. But you're saying one twenty nine five, the parking lot is one twenty nine point five.
Yes, at the lowest spot.
So why would the water, why would the water run? I mean.
The water's going to run into this depression all the way around the building, where it will infiltrate into the ground. If if it doesn't infiltrate, as I mentioned, it will back up, it will pond in all these areas. And it will head out likely this low spot up at the southeast corner or the northwest corner. The other sites, I believe, the other sides of the property, I believe, are are similar, one twenty nine five around the property.
Right. I I I guess I I would want to see the elevations on the abutting properties.
It it's going to go, I I the the abutting properties are lower than our site. Yes.
Well, your first comment was, right, your your first comment was if the basins fill up, it would flood your site first, then it would flood the neighbors. And that's not correct. It's going to flood the neighbors first and you're protecting your site.
What I meant to say, it will flood our basin of lawn areas first.
Right. And then it's going right into the neighbor's property, not onto your property. Shouldn't you be the one at risk and not the neighbors?
The the, based on the the calculations, there is, there's not a risk there. It's we could, if, I suppose we could lower our site and lower the building so that there's, if it did flood, it flood more into the 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 parking lot. But I, the the other issue we have is that there the the water table below the basins, we have to maintain a certain separation distance. So we can't really lower these basins to make them any deeper.
Right, because the water table is pretty high over there.
Yes, it is.
Right. So the grounds, along with Commissioner Suzak, the ground's not going to take that much water before it starts coming up.
It will. That's why we've we've done these, the calculations to demonstrate that. We're above the water table. And we have the storage and infiltration capacity to take the runoff from our site. Unfortunately, we don't have a water body or a wetland or anything where we can discharge to.
Why can't you do a detention pond where the temporary stockpile is?
That I have no outlet.
Well, you have no outlet with what you have right now. At least it would give you more storage capacity.
Well, the the issue is, is that if if by digging this deeper here, then we we get to the point where we don't maintain the separation to the water table anymore.
Okay.
That would be essentially, it would be the same thing we have now, just providing more storage capacity. But as I mentioned, we we demonstrated that what we have now, it has sufficient storage capacity.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Tim. Commissioner Alimo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm looking at Town Engineer Jim Kabibo's comments here. And I I'm thinking he's talking about the same thing that's being discussed currently. He says the details for a proposed stone trench is only sixteen inches, typically ground frost penetrates to forty eight inches. It is recommended that the stone trench detail depth be forty eight inches or be increased. Is that what we're talking about? What Kabibo's?
That revision has already been made.
Right. But is this, is this the trench? Is this relative to the runoff we're discussing here?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Okay, so.
Relative to the stone trenches that.
Inside the in the in the perimeter?
Yes.
Okay, did you make those correct? Is it going to be forty eight inches like the town engineer required and requested?
We compromised on thirty six, knowing that there's that frost depth around here is forty two inches and with capillary rise that the thirty six would be sufficient. So they have that modified to address his comment. Yes.
Did um, the town engineer agree with your, would you say thirty six?
Yes, there's another memo from from John Kabibo subsequent that's dated May eleventh, which says, most of my previous comments have been addressed. There were three minor items, including the old standard town notes were added and the phone number is outdated. The phone number should be revised to the schedule to schedule inspections. The mill and pave detail for the permanent pavement repair on the town road was added, but the plan view still does not show the twenty foot wide mill and pave area on Danny Terrace on Plan Sheet Five or Nine. Also on Sheet Five or Nine, it's noted that the sidewalk on Danny Terrace should be patched with permanent pavement patch. This should be revised to concrete sidewalk. Because the town recently replaced the pimous sidewalks with concrete. So those were his three follow up issues after the original memo, which included all his comments that are listed in the planners.
Okay, but I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear the part where he's okay with thirty six inches opposed to forty eight.
Well, he says the previous comments have been addressed with the exception of the three minor issues that I just read.
Okay, I just would feel a little more comfortable if he said, okay, with thirty six somewhere in those sentences. But maybe we can make that a condition of approval if need be. So that is exactly what Kabibo's talking about here, is that whole perimeter drainage.
That's a frost issue, Commissioner Alimo. But he's talking. Doesn't, so it doesn't freeze up like Commissioner Suzak was addressing.
Right. So he is talking about the drainage that he he wants to see the stone increased so it doesn't freeze up. And with that said, he's okay with it.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be sure that the town engineer is okay with what we're talking about here. The other, only other thing I would want to see, maybe it already is a condition of approval, is the easement document here for the sewer line. Obviously, you can't build without a sewer line, but that's the other, only other thing I would want to see. I know you said the paperwork is in process.
Yeah, that's fine. We obviously, we would need that prior to construction. So there's no issue with making it a condition that we submit that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Alimo. Is there no sewer line on Shaker Road right there, Tim?
No, there's not. It ends actually at the intersection of Danny Terrace and Shaker Road.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Suzak.
I I, yeah, again, the only point I want to make is that, you know, the the ground freezes and 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 normally what you have to do is you have to provide enough heat to prevent whatever is adjacent to the cold weather or cold temperatures to prevent them from freezing and that, you know, normally, if if you had the entire site blanketed with a a stone, you know, based to to three feet, I would say, fine, because now all of a sudden, you know, that that soil is now frozen because, you know, the the stone protects it and and it allows, you know, you to to fill that three feet void of stone with water. But the fact that you have soil that is frozen, you know, you can't infiltrate water into frozen soil so that the water just backs up. And and then once, you know, the 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 soil is frozen, it's not going to accept or allow any more infiltration because of the fact that, you know, you 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 need to have that temperature gradient that's going to keep supplying heat to keep the frost from from forming. And 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 I don't see that that exists in terms of, you know, once the ground freezes, it it doesn't absorb any more water. I mean, my own, my backyard floods all the time because of the fact that in the wintertime, when when it's frozen, there's no place for the water to go.
You have, you have three feet of stone?
I only have a backyard that that's surface drained. And, you know, I'm not taking impervious surfaces and trying to, you know, put it into, you know, some something that's frozen. So now all of a sudden, you know, what what happens is that the frozen surfaces don't accept any water. So so all of a sudden, where's the water going? And and, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but again, I don't think that, you know, I'm I'm in favor of this because of that condition that we're going to affect our neighbors, your neighbors' yards. And then we're going to be liable for it. And and the town's going to have to fix it. So um, I I again, I'm not sure, you know, what we can do, but somehow we we have to not have the town responsible for the decisions we're making.
Well, with the three feet of stone, Rich, what's going to freeze?
Well, yeah, but it's only, it's only three feet of stone for twelve inches wide or or, you know, two feet wide. It's it's not in around the entire area. So so everything that's, you know, beyond that, that width of that stone is frozen.
Right, but it'd be a curtain drain. The water would sheet flow over the frozen soil to the curtain drain.
Right. So so but then when it reaches that 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 drain, and the drain isn't continuous all around the periphery, all he has are these little slots, you know, that are might be, you know, twenty five feet. And then there's five hundred feet, you know, in between them or or seventy five or a hundred feet in between them. So it's not a continuous drain. It's it's just a slot drain that occurs at at all these locations. So you can you can sort of see that, you know.
Yeah, I see it. I see it now.
So so all the 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 ground are adjacent to all these slots is frozen. So where's it going?
Yeah, I see what you're saying now.
Essentially make it to these trench drains. Again, if 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 there is an issue, it's the property owner that that's going to be held responsible. I don't see how it's going to be the town. If if there's some language that you want to put in as a condition of approval that that more says it is the the property owner's responsibility, I, you know, I think that would be fine. But again, this this.
Can I, can I say something as, can I say something at this point, uh, Tim?
Go ahead.
Yep. This is Eric Sponge. And I'm a part of Winston Properties LLC. I'm the the developer of the property. I'm confident enough and I've used Tim and his firm long enough that if he's telling me that the calculations and the preferred way to go is this way, that then the responsibility can be with the property owner because he wouldn't do it any other way. And I know and and my experience with him proves that to me. So I don't have a problem with leaving the town not responsible in some language that you're that you're comfortable with, that that continues this process because I I firmly believe that what he's saying will be the way it works in the field. And he's proven it to me in on many, many occasions that that's the way things work out. So that's that's my position. If that makes you feel more comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Alimo, your hand still up?
Yep. No, it's up again.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. So I I'm looking to hear again at the town engineer's comments. So he specifically mentions ground frost and suggests the forty eight inches. So you're saying there was a compromise to thirty six inches. And obviously Kabibo is okay relative to ground frost.
Yes.
Guess I'm a little confused as to why this is an issue if the applicants professionals are saying that it's going to work. And apparently, our town, when we don't see him saying, okay, thirty six inches, but apparently, our town engineer is saying thirty six inches of stone is going to be okay. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why this won't work. Thank you.
The thirty six inches, Frank, is strictly for frost.
Right.
Right. So what what Commissioner Suzak's concerned about is all the other areas that don't have that trench. When that ground freezes solid, that water is not going to penetrate. So if you have excessive snowfall, which we all know, the water sits on top of it. And those drains get frozen over because of an ice storm or whatever, that water is going to build up. The the stone is is strictly for a frost. It's not for a storage. It's so the water can get down.
Right. And that's what I think the discussion has been. So it's just so I'm, so so I'm sure the whole perimeter, this drain we're talking about. It's going to be.
Not the whole perimeter. It's not the whole perimeter. It's those little hash lines you see in the drains. In in this swale, you'll see there's one at the back of the property. You know, there's one on right and left about a quarter of the way up and then three quarters the way up. And then there's one in the front for all that, for five, whatever the frontage is there, there's one across down Shaker Road.
Right. So when I first asked the question, the response back was from the engineer was, a whole perimeter is going to have thirty six inches, two feet wide, somebody said, of stone. So maybe I misunderstood. What are you saying?
I apologize because I I.
I did say the perimeter. You said yes.
Well, the 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 whole perimeter is the storage area and infiltration area. There are we have designed six fifty foot long stone trenches within the bottom of that to handle the situation if if there's frozen grounds, the water will get to those and going through those.
Now I understand the concern. I I thought you had said the whole perimeter all the way around will have stone, so the water would run into it, sheet off into that area.
Well, it will ultimately make it to those fifty, you know, those sections of fifty foot trench. If 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 it makes the commission more comfortable to make those longer or continuous, you know, we we could do that too.
I envisioned them. I see them now. I envisioned them continuous when we first spoke, when I first asked the question.
Well, if they were continuous, you'd have more water storage also, wouldn't you?
Yeah, and you'd have more more location for the water to get below any frost.
Right. And instead of a detention pond, you'd basically have a narrow detention pond around the entire property that's below grade.
Well, that it's essentially, that's what you have now. Only it's infiltration basin.
Right.
But now there are only fifty foot slots and they're in that they're scattered about.
Yeah, but the storage is actually in the depression itself, not not necessarily in the stone. The stone is just in the bottom. The trench is in the bottom.
Right. It's in the bottom of the trench thirty six inches down.
Actually, I I keep calling this, think of this as a basin, if you will. All right, this this all the way around it has one big basin with a stone trench in the bottom of it.
Right. And that stone trench goes down thirty six inches.
Correct.
And it's two feet wide.
Yes.
Right. So if you were to add that around the entire perimeter, that would add thirty six inches by two feet more of water storage.
It would certainly, yes, it would increase the water storage and the ability to uh, for the for the basin to drain.
And I'm sorry, that's exactly the way I understood what you said you had.
Right. I would be, I would be okay if you did that because I look at it that that additional stone area would act as a detention pond. But not your traditional detention pond. It would just be storage. And then it could leach. Um, yeah, I think you're going to have more direct leaching into the sandy soils with that stone because now you got three feet on each side of that with no topsoil, nothing that's going to freeze over on you. And I think the water would leach in under the frost. Um, I I would be okay with that. And if you guys were okay with the condition of approval on that, I'm good with the drainage that way.
I am because I I'm good with it.
I I just, we would, we would be acceptable to a condition that would require that.
Commissioner Suzak, how do you feel about that?
You you know, that makes me a lot more comfortable, definitely, because, you know, that, you know, allows for more surface area and more infiltration into the ground, not necessarily just at at these localized area and the potential for the the, all the areas to to freeze, it obviously still exists, but you know, there there's always, you know, wherever there is, you know, non frost soils, they will absorb the water. And and I think that's what we're trying to achieve is we're trying to achieve a a situation such that we don't create an adverse condition to our neighbors' areas. So, you know, I would feel more comfortable with that. Yes.
Okay. And I mean, you could pipe under the driveway with stone and just make it a continuous trench all the way around. And I I think at that point, you're demonstrating as much goodwill as you possibly can. But everybody says, you know, the owner would be responsible. But, um, everybody says, you know, the owner would be responsible. Unfortunately, the owners. The last one to get sued because they go to the deeper pockets. We approved something that didn't work. They're coming after us too. Those sue the owner also, but they're going after both of us and God knows we've been through it enough. So we're just trying to be cautious and. You know, it could avoid a lot of headaches for the owner in the future. So. Um, I'm good with everything with that condition of approval that the two foot by 36 inch stone trench. Goes around the entire property. Uh, any other commissioners comments? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'd like to open up public hearing 3008. To the public for the first time, 504 Hazard Avenue, special permit and site plan review for, oh, I'm sorry. 3007 11 Shaker Road, special permit and site plan. To allow construction of a 10,000 square foot daycare facility, which I know this town needs desperately. So is there anybody in the public who would like to speak in favor or against this application? If so, state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time? Going for the second time? And going for the third time, public hearing 3007 11 Shaker Road. Okay, seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close, close the public hearing. Twenty.
3007.
Yeah, 3007.
Motion's made. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public hearings closed. Um, how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve public hearing 3007. They, for the, the draft, let me start again. I make a motion that we approve the, the resolution to approve public hearing 3007. Dated May 13th, as prepared by the planning department with the 26 conditions indicated. The one additional site specific condition that that exists in our current, um. A resolution and to add one additional site specific condition that there be a continuous. Two, two foot by 36 inch deep trench drain that goes around the entire perimeter of the building. To allow infiltration of water at, at the entire. Or, or not the building, the, the, the site that, 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 where, where the trenches are located, they just be connected as a continuous trench.
Okay, motions and seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Uh, roll call please.
Nelson.
Four.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Don Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
All in favor, none against. Congratulations and I wish you the best of luck because I do know Enfield needs daycare. So.
Thank you very much.
Facility.
Much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Good luck.
You too. And then Lori, if you could, um, send the commission, John Kabebo's comments where he agreed to the 36 inch depth, please.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on, public hearing 3008 504 Hazard Avenue.
The, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, May 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Online regarding public hearing 3008 504 Hazard Avenue, special permit and site plan review epic click. Application to allow a farmer's market associated with Powder Hollow Brewery and RD Winery. Ten Water Street LLC owner, Michelle McAuliffe and Michael McManus, applicant's map. 101 lot 216 I1 zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
I almost forgot you again.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Don Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Great. Is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep. My name is Mike McManus. I'm the owner of Powder Hollow Brewery, 504 Hazard Ave, Enfield, Connecticut.
Hi, my name's Michelle McAuliffe. I'm the owner of RD Winery, 504 Hazard Avenue, Enfield.
Congratulations and welcome. Um, do we have virtual beer samples and wine sample to go with our beer tonight or with our chicken tonight?
Check your inbox. It's right there.
There you go. Tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
So we'd like to start a farmer's market in our parking lot. We've got a pretty nice area for it. It goes along with the theme of what we do of, you know, using locally sourced products and getting them out to the consumers. And we think it'd be a great fit for our business and something that the town clearly enjoys and needs additional support on.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, questions? None?
No, I have one.
Go ahead, Commissioner DeGray.
Um, is this just going to be for the summer months? You know, from say. Okay.
Yes, this is going to be an outdoor only, so it's very weather dependent.
Okay, great.
All right, great. Commissioner Higley.
That goes along with my question. If it rains on Saturdays, will you have it on Sundays or just wait for the next week?
I think unfortunately due to the farmer's schedule, it would be up to them, but most likely it would have to be pushed to the following week.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, um, do you have outdoor seating? Didn't, didn't we approve a permanent outdoor seating area for you?
Yes, we just got an architect on board. So the town, uh, building department was nice enough to let us get started. So we are virtually done with the patio and we have an architect drawing exactly what we built. That we can now provide to the building department.
Okay. And you feel you're going to have enough parking between this and the outdoor patio?
Oh yeah, we've got a nice overkill sized parking lot at this property.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Grillo.
Um, quick question. Where on the property did you plan on having, uh, the market? I'm just wondering. I. I know the property pretty good. Is it going to be in the front right corner? Is that where you, where the big parking lot is or on the?
It's going to be having it. It's going to be tucked in the back. So if you're entering into the brewery or the winery and our little manway doors. It'll be in that back parking lot area. Um, so that way the big front parking lot and all the side parking. That wraps around the whole property will still be available. And it gives us the most clear cut way of making sure cars don't go anywhere near the market. And we've got these, uh, rain drums that we'll put so that cars know they can't come back there. But for an emergency vehicle, they could be moved in five seconds.
All right. That was going to be my second question. Where, where you are, because I know you got the area for it, just that you're going to have to block it off somehow, some way. So cars, you know, people don't always pay attention and.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll use the rain drum. So it's nice and easy to move them.
Yep, that's cool. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Higley, did you want to speak again? No, okay. Um, any other commissioners before I open it up to the public? Seeing none. At this time, I'd like to open up public hearing 3008 504 Hazard Avenue. Special permit and site plan review to allow a farmer's market associated with Powder Hollow Brewery and RD Winery. If you would like to speak in favor or against this application, please state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time? Going for the second time? And going for the third time? Okay, seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing 3008.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Grillo. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public hearing is closed. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution to approve public hearing. PH 3008 dated May 13th, 2021, as prepared by the planning department with the 14. Total conditions and one site specific condition.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Roll call please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Don Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo. Four. And Richard Suzak is four.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
I wish you guys the best.
Thank you.
You have a great summer.
We're hoping so too.
Okay, moving on. I see no old business.
What's up? Did we just only close the public hearing? Don't we have one more step? Okay, we're all set. Okay, just want to make sure.
Moving on, old business, I see none. New business, I see none. Other business withdrawal request, public hearing 2998. Lori can give, you give us an update of why they withdrew?
I don't know. I think we were all surprised. They just called one day and said, I'm sorry. Um, they just called and said, we know it's foul. We want all of our funds back and. We don't know why, uh, unless Jed knew her otherwise.
No, um, that's. I mean, I never heard back from them when I, uh, told them that they needed a site plan. Um, and then when I followed up with them, that's all they said is that they wanted to withdraw instead.
Okay. Um, we don't, do we need to move on anything on that, Lori?
I would just accept it without prejudice.
Okay.
Accept the draw without prejudice.
Do we normally return funds?
We don't have the ability to return funds without going to town council or approval.
Right, because there, you know, there's been some administrative work down here in, uh, processing and I'm not sure why we would return. That amount of money.
So I guess, I mean, if they withdrew it like after or something like that, but we have done work.
That's what I'm saying. I'm sure you did.
But we, we don't have the ability to, um, return funds once, you know, legal ads have gone out and things of that nature.
Exactly. That's, that's where I was going with it.
Okay, uh, I'll accept the motion to accept this withdrawal request without prejudice.
So.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the withdrawal request has been accepted. Discussion items discussing. Uh, regarding temporary outdoor lighting for ball fields at Eli Whitney. Jen, Laura.
My mute, uh, bar is like up on the top, but I was looking for it on the bottom. So, um, the, we would like to put, I'm trying to get this centered here. We would like to put, um, temporary outdoor lighting before the ball fields over at, uh. The school over, uh, by the library, um. See everything here for some reason. There we go. So over at Eli Whitney, um, they would only be placed. Um, there, I think from 5:30 to 8:30 on, on just a few nights. So. We don't necessarily have anything in our regulations that. You know, for site plan approval or anything, but we do typically regulate lighting. So, um, we thought we would bring it to you informally. Um, this is the only site that they're thing to do this this year. And quite honestly, if they stop at 8:30, um, you know, for most of the summer, it, it out that anyway.
Weren't they going to do Powder Hollow too, Lori?
So actually, um, I misunderstood what they were talking about with Paul. They actually want to, uh, attempt to do, um. Full time lighting there, permanent lighting. So that would, I think would have to come before you certainly for, uh, a lighting plan.
Yeah. Well, I'm all in support of, um, parks and fields and getting people out of their houses, especially after this year. So. It's temporary lighting. I don't see, we need to make any move on this. How does the commission feel?
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine.
Um, I, I, I do have to be a little bit of a Debbie Downer. Um, I have driven over onto Meadow Road. When the temporary lighting was on for the crack school. And it was almost blinding driving into Meadow Road and. That might be a concern to the neighbors. Even though you're saying it's temporary, it'll be shut off, but, um, it's still their floodlights. They're, they're brighter than a, a street light and the angle that they would be at. They're granted, they're pointed down, but it's still going to flood into those houses. I mean, I personally like to go out and watch games at night. But I have a concern for the neighbors when we're talking about these big. Floodlights being pointed to the field and then going out into the neighborhoods. And for the cars that are driving. I, I know I'm, I'm the only Debbie Downer here, but it is something that you have to think about.
All right. Is there anyone else?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Grillo.
Um, yeah, um, Commissioner DeGray, I, I, I hear what you're saying. But that baseball field is in the back corner. What's in the front of that? Uh, there's not a house for what's that South Road over there in the houses that you're looking at in the back. Um, that we're looking at right there. I, I honestly think I, I. That they are far enough. I know the lights you're talking about. Um, I know the kids play into fall. Uh, so okay, the sun's going to go down at eight. The lights may be on for a half hour. Um. I don't think it would be a concern with the driving part. Uh, it's really far. From the baseball field. You, you may be right, but just by going by there, I think the baseball field is blocked. By partially the, the library and it, and all the trees that are really in front of the library, actually. That go across that would probably avoid most of it. Um.
I have to differ with that because the lights from the crack school. Are in their field.
No.
And there is a buffer. And the, the lights are further away than what we're talking about at this library area. But, um, and I, you know, you're saying, well, there, there aren't, there's only going to be on for a short period of time. I, the first time I drove into Meadow Road and they were on, I was, it kind of took me back. They are brighter than a normal street light and it's something that we have to think about. And you're saying, well, it's still only going to be for a short period of time. But if you have to get up at three o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the morning and you're going to bed early. Having daylight in your room, it's normally dark, this is an issue. Or have small children. That's, that's all I'm saying. Just something to think about.
They're going to shine into someone's house. That's all from that far away.
They're not shining into the houses, but it's lighting up that whole area. Very bright.
Commissioner Petronella.
Um, I, I don't really have a problem with it. Um.
Um, I, I don't really have a problem with it. Um, I, I, I guess I understand that the time restriction is gonna be what till eight thirty? That's it? You know, Lori, is, is that correct?
Well, I, I don't think I muted. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It said yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and if, if there is an issue with glare and, and, and overriding, I think we know who to call to, uh, maybe move or adjust some of the, some of the lights as well. So I, I, I don't have really any, any issue with this, uh, this request.
Okay, thanks, John. So you have consensus, Lori, to move ahead.
I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, Frank, I, I got, I didn't see it.
Okay. Can I speak?
Yep.
So, um, Linda, are you concerned about the four, one, two, three, four houses on Middle Road? Is that what you're looking at? Because the lights will be probably in the infield facing northeast.
All right, but you also have one on, a house on Almstead?
But that'll be behind, that house will be behind the lights. The lights will be in the infield facing out. The lights will be facing northeast.
All right, if you look, they're not all facing northeast, Frank. They're, they're gonna be facing south.
Right, I see the little stars there, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking the ones in the outfield are gonna be tipped down. I'm just looking at, you know what I'm saying? And the major, the majority of them, the other one, two, three, four fixtures are gonna be going northeast and kind of south. Is that what you're looking at? Are you more concerned, I guess I'm asking about, you more concerned about the houses on Middle or Almstead?
I'm concerned about the houses on Almstead and on Middle. It, they are brighter than a normal light and.
Well, because they're lighting up a field so they can see the ball.
And I understand, I know, I know, but I'm concerned that the neighbors are going to disturbed by it, that's all.
I think, I think the Almstead, the Almstead houses are very far away. It's the ones on Middle Road. I would think that if anything, Almstead's far away.
Okay, Commissioner Higley?
I said. I, I think that because they're temporary, this is the first time we're going to try it. And if the citizens that live around there have any issues and they can't be addressed, like in other words, they can't move the light or tweak it or move it down, then they might get rid of that light or not put it up for next year. So I have no problem with it. It's temporary and if the citizens have a problem with it and let the town know. And if the town can't address it, then they can take them down. But the kids have to play, play something.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioner Suzak?
You know, I agree with Commissioner Higley that, you know, it is temporary, the lights are directional so that, and they're, they're portable. So that what happens is that if it's shining in, in a particular direction that is very uncomfortable for some of the residents, you could always just turn it five or six degrees and it's not gonna shine in that direction anymore. It'll still light up the field like it's supposed to be lit up. So in that vein, I think that, you know, with the, 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 the fact that they're mobile and relocatable and directional, that, you know, we can alleviate a lot of concerns and, you know, obviously there's gonna be, you know, the first setup that, that will be the test and then adjustments will have to be made after that.
Thank you, Commissioner Suzak. So again, Lori, you have consensus from the commission. Um, to be honest, I'm sick and tired of hearing about the crack school and, you know, the people who have issues with it. They lost the schools there and kids gotta play and adults have to play. This is, you know, softball leagues for, you know, all the adults throughout town, the kids. We gotta get out of our houses and to argue over a light, a temporary light is absurd. So you have consensus. I say light up all the ball fields for the summer and it's only a half hour. I mean, I, I'm complaining about daylight savings time when it stays light till nine o'clock at night because, you know, it's too bright in your house. It's just, I don't get it. Moving on.
We don't have to vote?
No.
Okay.
It was a discussion.
Okay, I see it.
Correspondence. Any? No.
No, I don't have anything.
Thanks, Jen. Commissioners correspondence. I have one that I would like to discuss with the commission and staff. The governor's order is coming due and if he doesn't renew his order, which I hope he doesn't, but if he doesn't, that's gonna make all the temporary outdoor dining done illegal. And with what the restaurants have gone through this last year, I'm asking the commission that we do a local extension of it at least until say maybe the end of October. So they can get through the summer months with their temporary outdoor dining because there's still a lot of people out there who are very nervous. And I just feel anything we can do to help these restaurants try to recoup would be beneficial to them. And it'll also give them another six months if they want to keep it permanent to put their applications in.
Mr. Chair, I believe that the state extended that a year.
To March.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with what happens in a week or two here?
I, I don't believe so because I think the state actually took action to extend the restaurant. Um, I thought it was for a year, but, um, we could double check, but I, you know, come, well, this is what I was gonna discuss in a minute. But, um, all of these executive orders, we don't know where it's going at this point. We're going to assume because we have no other information that they're going to lift the required, the ability for us to meet virtually, which means we will be meeting in person at our next meeting. However, I know the town health is not set up for that yet and ETV is trying to figure out whether we're supposed to be doing, you know, uh, hybrid meetings or whatever. And then, uh, we're just waiting to find out what's gonna happen with, uh, inside, um, participation, so.
Back to the restaurants again, um, do we know that it was extended? Cause I, I'm, I talked to Rick right at the end of winter. And he said you guys were waiting for the governor's orders because it was gonna expire like Commissioner Chairman Nelson said soon.
I believe they were extended by the state.
I think we have to make sure.
Well, we'll double check, of course, but I, I'm almost positive about this.
Okay, if, if you find out.
For the restaurants.
Just for restaurants. If, if you do find out that it is gonna expire, can you have it on the next agenda, please, Lori?
Yep.
To discuss. Jen?
When is the expiration date?
March twenty-second.
March twenties? No, no, I'm talking about the one we're discussing, the one we're concerned about.
May.
May.
This month, I think.
May nineteenth?
He extended it through, he extended it through this, this season and on to Med, to March.
Yeah.
Or you'll check it out.
When that will expire, but the, the executive orders that we all know currently are all due to expire on May nineteenth or twentieth. I've heard both dates.
Yep.
And I read this article in the patch that says the state has extended Governor Lamont's pandemic authority until July twentieth. So he still has his executive.
Well, we need.
That just came out today?
Yep.
Uh, so then we are not in.
No, he's just extended his powers.
No, he got rid of the masks. He got rid of the masks.
Right.
We will find out tomorrow what the actual of.
Thank you, Lori.
And.
I watched the president.
So my, my concern is that we don't have, we don't have a, we don't have a gap between our next meeting and the expiration date.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't.
Well, but we're also not gonna take, if the, if it's not extended, we're not gonna go take measures to shut everybody down either, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I, I mean, I, I would hope the whole state does it and I hope he did extend it for restaurants. But if he didn't, I want to make sure that we do. Okay, Commissioner Higley?
My hand is stuck up. I'm sorry, I can't lower it.
And you're frozen.
At least your hands, the only thing.
I got it. I got it down.
Okay, uh, any other commissioners correspondence? Seeing none, Director of Development Services report? None?
Nothing more, no.
Okay, Administrative Approval Report?
So we have quite the list again, uh, this week. Um, we have ten leg away. Um, there was an approval to allow them to install dumpsters on their site. Um, they were, they had been approved previously by the commission on a site plan review to have new uses in that building. I guess their original approval didn't have dumpsters associated just with, uh, what's inside the building or the operations inside the building. Dumpsters are outside, but they are. Um, that was one administrative approval. Another was for, um, a barber shop to be located at seven forty Enfield Street where there had previously already been a hair salon. Ninety-four Biddle Road, um, was a zoning permit to, oh, oh, this is what was just discussed, um, tonight. A zoning permit was received, um, for the temporary lights at the ball field at Eli Whitney School. Um, with your guidance, we'll just have, um, Rick take care of that zoning permit. And then at fifty-four Hazard Avenue, we actually have two new tenant spaces that are being filled. One by a retailer called Game Exchange. Um, and I believe they already have their sign up and they might already even be open. Um, they moved pretty quickly and.
What is Game Exchange? What is that?
I, it's, it looks pretty similar to, um, I was, I was there, they actually, the other day, um, in that shopping center. It looks pretty similar to GameStop. Um, and I think they, um, they buy and sell electronic devices from people as well.
Good.
And, uh, there's also a proposed smoke shop for that shopping center. Um, and then at seven eighty-six Enfield Street, that's the shopping plaza near Town Hall, the one with Subway. Uh, there is a proposed retail meat market um, for one of the unit, for one of the units over there. And that's it for admin approvals.
Thank you, Jen. Applications to be received.
Um, so we have two listed on the agenda, um, one being the site plan um, component for the redevelopment of the Blair Manor facility. Um, and then the second is a proposed text amendment application. About, it's probably about two months ago now, um, Rick had asked the commission, um, if you'd be open to seeing this text amendment to allow bedrooms in the basement as long as, um, it meets the requirements of the building code. And so we moved that forward to the Capital Region Council of Governments. They didn't have any concerns, so that'll be on for the next agenda. Um, and there's also a third, um, application that we received uh, for eighty-nine Enfield Street. That's the former Commonwealth Restaurant. And they want to request that a condition of approval on the original approval for the restaurant be, um, removed. So yeah, that's what we have so far.
On the bedrooms in the basement, if somebody meets the codes, uh, could you do an in-law?
So in-law apartments, um, they always require a special permit. And there are very specific, uh, criteria outlined in that section of the regulations. Um, I'm not, I'd have to honestly, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if in-law apartments would be allowed in the basement based on this. That's something that I can certainly look into.
Yeah, if you could.
In the staff report.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Jen. All right, uh, opportunities and unresolved issues, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Alamo. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, night. Bye.